Appeals meeting for January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. This evening we have one table item on the agenda and four scheduled matters. Since it's our first meeting of the year, we do have a few organizational items to address and clear up. I would like to make a motion to reappoint Mr. Barone as the vice chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And reappoint Ms. Volo, who also just got reappointed by the town board for a five-year term, as reporting secretary.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else we need to address on that? We do have proof of legal publication for each of this evening's matters posted in the Webster Herald. And we do have a full board this evening, all of five members. Mr. Barone just happens to be attending via conference call. If you could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America and to Republic, Republic of San Antonio, Undercover, Indivisible, Equability, and Justice.
Okay, we're going to move forward with the first table item this evening, which is Bunsey's sign.
Located in twenty-two thirty-five Empire Boulevard, applicant Josh Palmer of Vital Signs is requesting an area variance to allow a second building-mounted sign where only one is permitted to update an existing monument sign associated with Bunsey's neighborhood food and drink on a two-point-zero-nine acre parcel having SBL number zero-seven-eight-point-two-zero-dish-one-dish-five-six-point-eleven located in an MC medium-intensity commercial district under section one-seventy-eight-dish-seven of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening, my name is Steve Stanley here in lieu of Josh Palmer from Vital Signs. As you can see here, we are proposing a hundred-and-twenty-six-inch width by ninety, I'm sorry, sixty-seven-inch height, new internally-lit channel letter sign for Bunsey's. This location of the sign would be on the west side of the building. It would also be visible by the northbound traffic. That is one of the main reasons why we are proposing to add the additional building-mounted sign to the building. Building itself is very deep, and with the absence of a sign on that side of the building, it does look as if that space is vacant, banket, wow, banket. Where in fact, it is a thriving business for the town of Webster. So as decided, it would be an internally-lit channel letter with acrylic faces mounted directly to the building. And on top of that, we'll also be changing out the pylon sign. And per the notes from last week's meeting, we are adding the address to the bottom of the sign. As you can see with the rendering they handed out tonight. And are there any questions with the rendering that was handed out tonight?
That was the only comment from the planning board?
Correct, just to have the address added to the sign somewhere.
No comment on the second facade sign?
I'm sorry?
They didn't have a comment on the second facade?
No, there were no comments.
I didn't know that.
We also feel that the signage that is being added to the building, it is in the same line as the other signs that are along Empire Boulevard there, competing with other businesses to draw business to Bunsey's. And as I mentioned before, there, with the lack of the sign on that side of the building, there does look to be a large void on the building. Where proposing the additional signage would suggest that there indeed is a thriving business at that location.
Any comments for the app?
Do you plan on changing the existing east-facing front sign?
Oh, yes.
The orange background evolved match or?
Correct, we will be changing out the red letters that are on the sign currently on the building. We will be changing those to match the new proposed orange faces on the sign. So everything will look uniformed.
And the signs will be the same size on both faces?
Correct, exactly the same size.
How tall is your freestanding sign?
The panel itself is, as you can see in the rendering, is seventy-one-and-a-half inches wide by seventy-two inches tall. Unfortunately, I do not have the height of the existing sign that is there. Judging by the card that is in the picture, I would say it's at least maybe fifteen to twenty feet tall to go up to the top of the Tony Tomatoes sign.
Do we know or not if that code ever changes six foot for a monument? Is it pre-existing? Yes, it's pre-existing.
So I assume you're going to use the same frame and just replace the panel?
Oh, yes, a hundred percent using the existing structure that is there. We're just simply changing out the, excuse me, the lexan faces on both sides of the existing structure.
This meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application. Seeing no one, we return the discussion back to the board. Pursuant to NYCRR section six-seventeen of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for type-two seeker.
Second.
All in favor? Mr. Barone, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I just have to take my phone off the music.
No, I'm sorry, any comments or questions?
No, never mind.
Any other questions from the board?
Well, I know it's a freestanding sign, it's existing, that form. Actually, to be able to bring it up to the standard, no, I should, that's the issue, I have. I like the number on the sign, on a freestanding sign. I think that's more important than the secondary sign on the structure itself. I have it.
Yeah, no, I like all that.
Yeah, a lot of people look for that. You got crickets going on there?
I, the second sign, it isn't excessive for the amount of building space that you have. But the only other business along this stretch that has the second facade sign is the Enterprise Building, and they have the second facade sign instead of the monument sign. So I don't know if it sets a precedent of too much signage.
In my opinion, I think I like those freestanding signs, especially because it has an adro sign. I think that's more important than the second facade sign.
Barry, do you mind putting your phone on mute?
It certainly isn't out of character. I mean, if we go down the road all the way down to the plaza where Croix-États is, they have a, I mean, it's not inconsistent with this neighborhood by any means. I understand your point of maybe trying to get this up to code in terms of the monument sign at six foot. That would obviously take some coordination with the top portion of the sign, right?
Mm-hmm.
Who's the current tenant there?
I believe it's Tony Tomatoes. But it's not, I can't speak factually to who's actually in that space.
I assume it's a different owner than either Bunsey's or?
I believe that it is, yes.
No, I mean, the plaza is owned by somebody else besides the tenants.
I, yes, I believe so. And I also believe that the top, the tenant that's represented on the top is actually a different building altogether on that space, I believe.
Because what, I mean, in the one picture, Shogun was out the back. That was in the building at the back, correct? So could you express your, what's your recommendation? What are you?
I'd like to bring the freestanding sign to standard, you know, to the highest standard. At least someone, it's much harder than full permit by today's, I understand it's pre-existing, not performed.
Would that be able to be addressed at a different time, considering that the main application is for the second building sign in this particular instance?
Yeah, how about we do this, so we can move this along? I think everybody seems to be in favor of the second sign on the building. I think maybe some coordination between the other tenant and the landlord to see if we perhaps could do something a little bit different to reduce the size, the overall height of that monument sign, to come closer into compliance, which is six foot for a freestanding monument sign.
Not trying to go down a rabbit hole here. I think that would need to take some coordination with the plaza owner, more or less?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, yeah.
Okay.
The owner of the plaza, correct? I'm assuming this is steel structured sign, right?
Yes.
I would imagine that. A couple of modifications, even to bring that, the top panel down so that it's side-by-side with Bunsey's sign. I don't think that's significant. So if we could at least put some suggestion, a recommendation back. We'll move forward with the application tonight. Maybe give you a couple of months to have conversations with Bunsey's, the owner of Bunsey's. And if he can coordinate with the other tenant that has a sign on top, and the landlord, to see if they can come up with something that comes down closer into compliance with the height requirement of our monument sign, which is six foot.
Correct.
Even if you took that top portion off, I'll use the one example with that picture you had where Shogun's on top, put it down onto the side and remounted it there, you know what I mean? Now you produce that.
Oh, I see where you're, I see where you're referencing Shogun, yes.
Okay. All right, so let's proceed with the, any other findings or fact? I think we have stated that it's not out of character in the neighborhood. There are other businesses up and down that section where they drove on the north side, especially that have second facade signs on two exposed sides of the building, where there's traffic in addition to a monument sign. No environmental impacts. Anything else to add?
Protection improvement situation, I haven't really had a sense of.
Yep, it's out of the monument sign, it's not on the facade sign.
But that's part of it.
Still, it was required, it was required by the planning board.
Right, well, it's actually just part of the coverage.
Okay, anyone here to make a motion?
So the motion is going to be fully yet approved?
Yeah, for now. And do you want to table the other portion of your request?
If you're telling me that the request to change out the lexan face to the existing sign, even though we're just changing the, technically changing the color to the face that needs to be tabled to another meeting because it will not be approved, then that's what we'll do?
We want to do that, and we want to put a condition on this, that the, we'll just put a condition, we'll move forward with it.
So to be clear, we'll be able to move forward with?
The lexan replacement with the, with the address, the secondary facade sign, with a special, with a condition that you're going to coordinate with the other tenant and the landlord to bring this closer to compliance, which will be six foot. But the recommendation, at least from my point of view, would be to move that top section and just remount it on the side.
Okay, yeah, that might take a little bit of coordination.
Right, so we'll give you?
Yeah, we'll cross that bridge over.
So maybe we give two or three months, and then we require a follow-up, a report of you.
Understood.
That is more.
Appreciate it, thank you.
So we said three months, January eleventh, March eighth?
Okay, anyone here to make a motion? I'll speak at once. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to grant an area variance to Bunsey's for a sign located at two-twenty-two thirty-five Empire Boulevard by Vital Signs, requesting an area variance to allow a second building-mounted sign where only one is permitted, and to update an existing monument sign associated with Bunsey's neighborhood food and drink on a two-point-zero-nine acre parcel having SBL number zero-seven-eight dot twenty dash one dash fifty-six dot eleven located in an MC medium-intensity commercial district under section one-seventy-eight dash seven of the code of the town of Webster. And that would be consistent with the updated or revised drawing that was provided and dated on January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two by the applicant. And includes the address number, street number. And then the facade sign would be consistent with the drawing dated two-twelve, two thousand and twenty-one that was provided by Vital Signs.
Just one other note, the special conditions would be that you return to the board after having conversations with the landlord and the other tenant who has a sign mounted on top of the Bunsey's sign, Bunsey's monument sign, on March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, to provide us with a report of modification to the existing sign to come closer to compliance.
Understood.
Okay, Mr. Newtown?
Aye.
Mrs. Volo?
Aye.
Mr. Stuckman?
Aye.
Mr. Palza?
Aye.
Mr. Barone?
Okay, thank you. We'll see you back in March. That was the first table item, the first scheduled matter for this evening, is nine oh eight Joiling Drive?
Nine oh eight Joiling Drive Carport, located at nine oh eight Joiling Drive. Applicant Dave Palace is requesting an area variance to allow an eighteen-foot west front setback where thirty feet is required, and a twenty-six-foot south front setback where thirty feet is required, associated with construction of a fifteen-by-twenty-eight-foot lean-to slash carport on a point-three-nine acre parcel having SBL number zero-six-four, point-one-four dash two dash thirty, located in the R-three single-family residential district under section two-two-five dash eleven of the code of the town of Webster.
Yeah, pretty much sums it up. This is my first zoning board meeting, I appreciate you allowing me to pick them out here. The application is pretty straightforward, I'm looking at a fifteen-by-twenty-eight-foot lean-to carport on the side of my existing garage.
Anything else going on, too? Any details?
I sent an image to Josh yesterday, I don't know if you had a chance to print it out to show you an example of what it might look like.
Yep.
I'm not using an architect, I'm not using a designer. As a matter of fact, I have some old barn wood from a structure off of Clum Road that I've been waiting to do a project with, so I was hoping I could use that for some of the structural supports to keep it within neighborhood and Webster materials, I guess.
Charles, questions for the app?
Yes, sir. If I interrupt you, somebody's like hearing too loud. I question the actual concept that it was two foot above the window to the certain road rather than straight forward. It was on six feet straight forward rather than towards the, to the end of the corner.
Yes, you're saying that the twenty-six-foot setback?
Right, that's noted on the plot line.
Oh, there again, the setback is to the house, not to the carport. I'm sorry, yeah. No.
There's two measures?
Yeah, there's two measures, one twenty-eight-point-six, that's to the house. The twenty-six-foot setback, which is listed, is irrelevant, it's not right. It should be to, that should be a distance measured to the radius of the front property. Because that closest point, or closest distance to the corner of the carport.
Where's the eighteen-foot taken from? It's taken from the side and not the front, is that what you're saying?
No, the eighteen is correct to the side. But where it shows twenty-six to the south, probably should be noted, the closest point of that corner would actually be roughly a forty-degree angle, so it follows the curvature of the lot.
That's correct, radius, of the street, the street radius.
So it doesn't change the position of it, it's just how it's advertised?
Right, but if I look at the eighteen-foot all the way up, it's probably a little bit shorter on that radius.
It's just shorter, yeah.
Yes, I'll turn the scale, I like getting a scale.
It's going to be slightly less than eighteen foot. Assuming the twenty-six is to the radius, correct?
I'm sorry, I'm scared that's straight out of the eighteen-foot, or the twenty-six-foot.
So if this corner is, Thomas explaining, what would it be, front or side?
That's actually the way the carport, or the monument, is intended, I'm sure. I mustn't have heard. It was one of the various, probably.
Right, that were the case when the, when it's advertised, it was, yeah. See what we're saying?
I didn't hear everything, no.
Okay. The, so there's multiple things going on because you've got dimensions on two different documents here. If you take a look at the, I guess, the corner of the garage, it's measured out to the road at twenty-eight-point-six feet.
Correct.
Okay? And then your application says that you're requesting variance for twenty-six feet and? And eighteen, sorry, right?
Right.
So if you were to take that twenty-eight-point-six, move that to the corner of your lean-to, that's the dimension of the setback.
In lieu of the twenty-six foot?
It's going to be less than eighteen feet.
So is the eighteen-foot variance correct, and the twenty-six is not correct? Is that what you're saying?
So just to play devil's advocate here a little bit, because I'm having a little hard time understanding this. What would that be, a front guard or a side guard, if it's going?
It's a front yard, it's a corner lot. It's a two-front yard. The corner lot has two fronts, one side, one roof.
Yes, I'm aware of that, but I just haven't seen it drawn diagonally to the closest roof.
I wouldn't draw it diagonally, I've never seen that either, to be honest with you. But if you were to slide that eighteen-foot down, it's less than eighteen-foot on that setback. See what I'm saying? I've never seen it drawn a diagonal either. But if you do move that down to the corner, it's less than eighteen-foot, it's about sixteen-foot.
Well, and so would it just be one setback on the side, then? The front is setback further than the front facing of the house. So is it only the?
Well, it's.
East that's the concern? But the point should be the point that's closest to?
The closest distance?
The lot line.
Are you willing to move back, north?
Absolutely, if I don't have to come back here, I would do anything.
I say the same thing, but I'm coming back.
All due respect, I mean, yeah, it's not.
I agree with you.
It's not an architectural draw.
That's a good plan. I'm still, in my opinion, the eighteen feet, whatever that is, if you maintain that, yes, to slide that back, and twenty-six feet. I've never seen anything on a diagonal before. We've never provided a variance on a diagonal.
I know, we've just done that, right? We've done the closest point.
Yeah, the setback. Which would be, which would be that as long as you slide it back, you mean it's eighteen feet?
Right.
It's irrelevant, because if it's all the same, continue on, who cares? It's eighteen feet. As long as you meet the eighteen feet. How's that?
That works for me.
All right, this application is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against. Seeing no one, we return the discussion back to the board. Pursuant to NYCRR section six-seventeen of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for type-two seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the, thank you very much. The issue we're dealing with here is, this is a corner lot which has two front yards, essentially. And the way that it was identified on the drawing, the applicant had a front, a front yard because, or the front setback at twenty-six feet, because that's the front of his house, and then the side setback at eighteen feet, which really is irrelevant. I think we should just grant the variance at eighteen feet and call it consistent with its proposal from on the, I guess that would be the last lot line, right? It's on the heat that it's eighteen feet minimal. Understood?
Understood.
Everybody in agreement?
Yeah, eighteen feet, the lot, running parallel with the property.
Okay, anyone care to run through any of the standards or findings in addition to discuss?
It's not in order, I was kind of doing it in there, but there's only two lots that are like this, this one and a neighbor that's further to east. So it's an unusual lot, being that it has two faces on the curve. There is no detriment created to nearby properties, where the lean-to is going is actually shielded both to the rear and to the west by a hedgerow, so it won't be out there in the face for the neighbors. It's really not cheap, only any other method, it's on the driveway side of the house, on the garage side of the house, and it's the only logical location for it. I'll say it's not substantial in that it's not a enclosed solid structure, so it's not a wall that's going to be eighteen feet from the side setback. It's, it's more of an open structure, no adverse environmental impacts to the neighborhood or to the site. And with that, I can make a motion, if no one has anything else to add.
Well, I'd, I'd like to add a condition, make sure that this is not closed, no walls.
Which was your plan, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
The plan is to leave it as an open carport, not to be enclosed?
Initially open, correct.
Okay, do you have plans to enclose it?
I don't have solid plans at this point, no.
Okay. Would we then expect the.
You would have to come back. Right. We're approving a lean-to structure.
Okay, so if you do want to enclose it, you would need to come back.
Apply, yeah, please. Understood.
All right, anything else? I will make a motion to grant an area variance at nine oh eight Joiling Drive to allow an eighteen foot west front setback where thirty feet is required. And we're eliminating the twenty-six foot setback?
I would, I would just go with an eighteen foot.
So it's eighteen feet on the west, where thirty feet is required, associated with the construction of a fifteen by twenty-eight foot lean-to carport and a point three ninety acre parcel with SBL number zero six four, point fourteen dash two dash thirty, located in an R three single-family residential district for section two two five dash eleven.
And just for clarification, eighteen foot from the point.
From the west side.
On the west side, that is further back from the front, front portion of your garage.
Correct.
Front corner of your garage.
So that the entire wall is within that eighteen feet from the lot? Mrs. Vola?
Aye.
Mr. Newtzall?
Aye.
Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Mr. Housa?
Aye.
Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
Okay, you've got your variance, couple conditions applied, obtain unnecessary governmental permits, including a town building permit, and one year minimum bulk construction is set to expire one year from this date.
And that it's remaining.
And that it was approved as a carport structure.
Very.
Open on three sides. Okay?
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the next application is four forty-six Whiting Road subdivision.
Four forty-six Whiting Road subdivision, located at four forty-six Whiting Road. Applicants Eric and Karen Schneider are requesting an area variance to allow a minimum lot width of two hundred ten point three feet or two hundred fifty feet is required, associated with the subdivision of an existing seven point zero acre lot, giving SBL number zero four nine point zero three dash one dash thirty-four into two lots located in an LL large lot residential zoning district under section two two five dash twelve of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening, my name is Don White, I represent the applicants Eric and Karen Schneider for this area variance. You should have received a revised subdivision map. The variance is actually not two ten point three lot width, but two hundred twenty-one point one eight lot width. That's to maintain that the new flag lot will be three acres to, to the street line. Before it was three acres to the center line, but there was a request to make it three acres to the street line, so there was a slight adjustment to the, to one of the property lines to, so that the new lot would still comply with the three acre large lot zone. Eric and Karen, they've accepted a, a purchase offer for the, the flag lot, and it is subject to obtaining the town approvals, and so we need to, we're looking for this area variance. And then my understanding is the sub, actual subdivision approval, because it's a one lot subdivision, is basically an in-house approval. I guess they just run it by the planning board, but it's not an official application of the planning board. But we're doing this first. You'd argue that the, that it's a, not a substantial variance, that it actually is a twelve percent deviation from the two hundred fifty feet lot width. You really can't achieve the, the subdividing the property in any other feasible manner, because to the south is land owned by the county with Webster Park. To the north, you know, you'd have to try to buy his neighbor's land, that's probably not going to happen. So in order to really create the, the flag lot, you need the, you can't meet the two hundred fifty foot minimum width. And in fact, in the recent past, there have been five other variances granted to the, for the identical variances for lot width to the properties to the north that were also subdivided. It's not self-created, I'd argue, because the parcel was originally created in nineteen fifty-three, and it's rather odd shaped. It given three hundred feet at the road and two hundred feet in the back, and so it's not a rectangle, there's no perpendicular lines to Whiting Road, so you end up with a necessity for, for the variance to, to subdivide it. So we'd argue it's, it's, it's not a, an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, because there's similar variances, similar flag lots to the immediate north of this property.
Could you just restate the change from two ten point three to what did you say?
It's two hundred and twenty-one point one eight or one nine, it's on the, on the new map.
Yeah, well, I, I need classes and I can't.
Oh, you, I thought you were given.
I did, I can't read it right.
I thought you were given larger copies of the, the new map.
Eleven by seventeen, but my.
Right.
It was a small font.
Two twenty-one point one nine, I guess the surveyor, he rounded up instead of down.
So we just need to amend this to two twenty-one point one nine, is what you're saying?
Correct. So it's a, it's a lesser variance than was advertised.
I just wanted to make sure I heard you right, I put twenty, so, okay.
Certainly, as the applicant's, the applicant's representative has pointed out, we have provided a handful of variances very similar to this on Whiting Road in this exact area, just in the north, I believe.
Correct.
All those parcels were to the north?
That's right.
Not, nothing to, the south has been not counted, as was pointed out.
But this is why I heard of all of those other subdivided, subdivided lots, the other ones, so.
It was only one comment, and I only read it, because it did come in, hopefully not. As you know, this, as you know, the, as you know, this property is adjacent to Webster Park and just north of our trail connecting WR and P within the park. It also contains part of the magnificent stand of old beech trees in that area. We hope to minimize the impact of the development of this property on the character of the adjacent wooded trails. Runs of Webster Trails can support the requested width variance with an increased south side setback of sixty-five feet. So that, that would be for future development, I think I just wanted to get this documented for the purpose of this application. It really pertains to the future development and how the, I'm assuming it's going to be a house book on this side.
Yeah, a single family.
Right, so I think we just want to pass that along to the building department as an issue.
Well, I guess my question, maybe it's better if we get to a discussion of public hearing, but do you get to spot zone and change the setback in one particular lot?
I was just passing this along as if with a comment, I don't think it pertains to this board. I think we're looking at this from the standpoint of the area variance, not whether or not we're going to preserve trees, that's not, not for us.
But I just, I don't think, I don't want to say I don't think it should be considered at all, but I don't think that, I don't think even the town can enforce that based on the setback for large lot is fifteen feet from the side. And it's, it's actually county property, not town property, so I don't think the county has placed any concern.
I merely read it into the record as, as it came in, related to this certain application, so. This meeting is open to anyone wishing this deed forward or against. Seeing no one, return the discussion back to the board pursuant to NYCR, section six seventeen of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for type two seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Sorry, Barry, I keep forgetting. All right, so a, a couple of findings or, or facts that we have related to the application. The applicant has amended the minimum lot width from, width from two hundred and ten point three feet, and increased that approximately eleven feet to two hundred and twenty-one point one nine feet. So they've lessened the variance request against the two hundred and fifty feet, which is required. Certainly, this is not out of character with the neighborhood, as the applicant's representative has pointed out, and participated in those other variance requests, there have been a handful of variances in this neighborhood. One, I believe, which was slightly less than three acres, this is going to maintain the three acres as is required for a large lot. No other adverse or environmental impact, other than, as was stated, the comment related to the preservation, but that is not for this board to. Anything else?
The applicant's, uh, applies with other variances, the other lots vary, two hundred and four feet wide, twenty seventeen feet wide, a hundred and eight feet wide, a hundred and seven feet wide, a hundred and sixty five feet wide, so this is a grown, a grown, a children's neighborhood.
Thank you, great point, Barry. Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the variance. For, making a motion to grant variance for four forty-six Whiting Road subdivision located at four forty-six Whiting Road. Applicants Eric and Karen Schneider are requesting an area variance to allow a minimum lot width of two hundred twenty-one point one nine feet or two hundred fifty feet is required, associated with the subdivision of an existing seven acre lot having SBL number zero four nine point zero three dash one dash three four into two lots located in an LL large lot residential zoning district under section two two five dash twelve of the town of Webster.
Second. Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
Mrs. Vola?
Aye.
Mr. Housa?
Aye.
Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Mr. Newtzall?
Aye. Okay, you've got your, your variance, four forty-six Whiting Road, couple conditions applied. I guess you're, as you've stated, this is going to go in front of the planning board, is that correct? Yes, sir. Sure, sure. But no formal action of government. Thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah, just to clarify, they, they will be for a lot number two of the subdivision. Aye.
All right, next up is six ninety-four Maple Drive.
Six ninety-four Maple Drive fence, located at six ninety-four Maple Drive. Applicant Amos Tomasi is requesting an area variance to allow a two foot south side setback and a two foot north side setback where ten feet is required, associated with the installation of a six foot tall privacy fence and a point nine six meter parcel giving SBL number zero six three point two zero dash one dash four, located in an R three single-family residential district under section two two five dash seventy-seven of the code of the town of Webster.
Hi, I'm Bill Antashie, I'm a friend of Amos Tomasi. He's from Ghana, and he doesn't know none of the rules in Webster, so I'm trying to help him with his new house that he just bought. He's trying to put in a six foot fence in his backyard, and he wants a shed too, but the six foot fence, he wants it close to the lot line right now, because he just bought this house from the state, and there's a chain link fence there now, but I would say fifty percent of the chain link fence is trash, the gates don't even come together no more, because it's, I don't know how long it's been vacant. He wants to put it close to the lot line as possible, because your rule's bringing in ten feet, which is, I'm from Greece, and I never heard of such a thing, I mean, he would go from a forty to twenty, and this doesn't make sense to me. So he wants it close to the lot line as possible, that's why we want the variance. And he just.
Can you back, let's reverse course here for a little bit, could you state your name and address again?
My name is Bill Antashie.
Sure. And your address?
My address?
Yeah.
Two oh two Old Country Road, Greece, New York. I, I worked, I used to work with the guy, I retired, and I, he's working, so I'm helping him out, because he's from Ghana, and he's, his English is very bad, and he doesn't know, he doesn't understand nothing. He just, he moved from the city, because he had a bad incident in the city, and his wife says, we got a guy out of the city. So he bought this house from, on the state, on an auction, and I think one of your employees from the town here, it used to be her, her uncle's house, that passed away, I think Josh knows her. Or that, that, okay. So he bought the house, and he just wants to put up, the, the fence that's there now is, well, he wants to beautify, he wants to make the back a lot better looking than it is, but he doesn't want to come in ten feet. I mean, he's got a built-in pool, and that'll just squeeze everything in, and it just, and how long has that rule, has that rule of ten feet coming in? I never heard of such a thing. Has that been around for?
Long since I've ever heard of it. Since the fifties.
Well, has everything been changed in it?
No.
No?
Yes, we, we are.
Yeah, because I talked to Josh, and he goes, he told me to bring this up, he said, this is ridiculous.
Josh is thinking of changing it, my opinion is no.
Yeah, but that rule is back then.
Yes, Webster has changed quite a bit in the past seven years, so we are looking to change it.
And there's nothing in his backyard, it goes to that creek that's in the back there, which is, I wouldn't even call it a creek, it's going to be a dam, because if you get any water back there, you got more trees and stuff back there, it's like. because if you get any water back there, you've got more trees and stuff back there. It's like. And it says, you gotta be more worried about the creek than this six foot fence that's making his backyard a lot better. And plus he had a neighbor, I guess, sent something to Josh or came in and he said, I'd be glad to have a six foot fence there, but he looked at it and it's looking bad now.
Alright, so. The one comment that did come in regarding this application, where are the neighbors on the north boundary? It says, we approve our neighbor's fence plan. If the fence is cut south to meet the east wall of the house foundation, we would approve less than the eight to, two foot setback. So I think what they're driving at here is. If I can decipher this correctly.
I spoke to him yesterday.
That they want that north side to come back to the back corner of the house as opposed to the front corner.
Okay, I even mentioned that to him too because he wanted to come up in front of the house and I told him to have the fence stuck and put it back to the back of the house.
I think that's more appropriate than to the front of the house.
He will agree with anything because he just.
And it's consistent with the south side as well, the way that he was tying into the back of the house on the south side. Right. It's a, that makes more sense.
Right now, it comes up to the front of the house, the chain link fence, and when I was at the property.
On the north side?
The neighbor, on the north side? Yes, on the north side. The neighbor on the north said he didn't care if the fence was even right up to the lot line. His wife would like it back a little bit, so maybe the roses would grow. There's been a row of pine trees there forever that have killed anything that they tried to grow under it. So that was.
Those were backed out.
But those, but the pine trees are gone.
Right.
And so he said, if you want to put it right up to the lot line, he doesn't care. It will look better than what it is right now. Or what it has been up to now that Mr. Tomasi has made many improvements already in the short time he's been here. And he wanted to come here tonight and tell us that, that he had a conflict, so I asked him to send it out. I've never met a more enthusiastic neighbor when we visit. Normally, it'd be angry neighbor, so.
But when he moved in, he got a built-in pool and all it was was just some plastic over it with, if the kid fell in it, he would just go right through. And everybody put a hard shell, Clover Pool came in and put a hard shell on the pool because he was worried about deer coming in the back. Because the fence is wide open now because it doesn't come together. And if, you know, there's deer back there and.
Oh, excuse me, if I could.
If, if you want to speak, we'll open up for public comment?
Yes, yes, I do.
We're, we're not there yet.
Maybe no one anymore.
Is that the neighbor?
What's that?
We'll get to that. We'll get to that in a second.
As far as the pool, you're correct. It wasn't for observing the spring door there. I wouldn't know that there was a pool there because it was all snow covered.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's why he put, he and Clover come in because he was worried, he's got three kids and he was worried about them just falling in, so Clover came and put that hard shell, whatever, on top.
That pool should be totally enclosed by a fence.
What'd you say?
That pool should be totally enclosed by a fence.
Enclosed by a fence?
Yes.
That's true. It doesn't need pool cover, is what you said.
Right, heard of this, we'll do that.
Okay. Alright, and we did, just to note, in our application package, we did have authorization for Kelly and Bill Antashie.
Yeah, that's my daughter, Kelly.
Yep, to represent Mr. Tomasi this evening, so. Just for the record. Okay, this meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application. If you'd like to speak for or against it, you must step up to the podium. State your name and address, please.
I'm John Bondi, currently as I have six nine six Maple. I don't have a problem with the owner. I don't, I'm not for or against it, but a lot of the facts that have been stated aren't, are not true. Okay, I've been there twenty-two years. I know everything about that house. I was good friends with the owner. It was never vacant. The pool's been enclosed for twenty-two years by the chain link fence. Chain link fence is not in disrepair. Their excavator blew it open on the north side and it's a mess now. The pool's always been enclosed. I used the pool for fifteen years. The whole, the house wasn't vacant. Most of everything that this gentleman said is not true. I'm concerned with the south side, my side. There's a current chain link fence. Where does that sit on the property line currently? The chain link fence that's existing.
According to the survey, it sits right on the property line, but I would like to just step back to know. A chain link fence, that's not in current compliance here.
I understand, I understand. You don't have to answer. That's fine.
Excuse me? What's that?
You don't have to answer. I just was curious where it was so I could see where the fence is going to be.
Well, there is one point on the existing chain link fence that is on your property to the south, at one point nine feet. At the south, southeast corner.
Who's speaking?
I am.
Oh, sorry, sir, I can't.
No, no, but I understand, yeah, regardless.
I liked it. So, so that isn't to call right now?
Well, it's somewhat skewed a bit based on this survey. That's what this survey is showing.
Okay, what about?
As they installed their fence, it sort of went solidly one point nine feet right here.
Okay. So I guess, yeah, I guess, I don't have any more questions, but the way the whole thing's being portrayed, it's, it's not like that at all. I can answer any questions about the property and any, and go up against anything he's got to say because I've been there for twenty-two years. So I don't really like how he describes the whole situation because none of, and I'm not against it. But I don't want to hear a bunch of nonsense either.
Yeah, once again, I think the applicant stated that he doesn't live there. He's from the town of Greece. He's.
Well, he stated a lot of stuff that he thought was factual and it's not.
Okay.
The fence, on my side, the fence was never in disrepair. They had some kind of subject issue and had an excavator back there. After they cut all the trees down and they knocked the fence way into the north side, yeah, the place a mess, yeah. Well, nowadays, it was never vacant. The gentleman died. The house was not bought in an auction. It was never bought in an auction. It was sold by Diane Miller Real Estate out of Pittsburgh. Same one I bought my house from. So everything that I'm hearing is upsetting because it's not even right. So if they're so credible and this guy's so great and everything else, then why don't they have real facts when they come here? What's all that about? So, yeah, that I'm, I'm worried, yeah. So I don't know where the property line is. But, yeah, their fence is already partially on my thing and I, there's a row of trees there too. So I want to know the relationship to the chain link fence. It's really where it's going, yes, on the south side. I don't care about the north. If it's going to be even with the house, that's perfect. I don't know. I just want to know what's going to happen. I'm not saying I'm against it or for it. I want to know what's happening before I get a surprise.
Do you have a survey of your property that shows the fence on your property?
Pardon?
Do you have a survey of your property?
Not here right now.
Right, but does there, does it show that the fence is one point nine foot on your property today?
Oh, I, I'm not sure. I moved in twenty-two years ago. I'm not really, I've been, they've been there, the neighbors, they've been great. I wasn't really concerned on any property line issues. The fence has been there. The pool's been closed. The fence was there when I got there. And there's also a big row of trees behind it that were there too. So, like, arborvitae that are really overgrown, so I don't know, you know.
Are those arborvitae's on the?
They're, Sarah.
Are the fence or interrupted by?
They're on the north side of the fence. It's a chain link fence and then I think they're, they're like up against it, but they're in some of the fence. So I'm just wondering, is the chain link fence going to stay? Is, is the wooden fence going to the north of that, the trees?
No. So let me, let me address that. If, if we prove this variance, the fence on the property line, the chain link fence, which doesn't, it's not even on their property because part of it's on yours.
Correct.
Does not comply. We would have them remove that in order to construct the new fence. So you would be eliminating the chain link fence. They would have a new vinyl fence up there.
And then they would have to address all the trees to do any kind of work there because they would be on either the two foot setback or they'd be behind it and then they wouldn't have to address it. I, I don't know. In fact, if it was back farther, it would work out perfect. They wouldn't have to touch the trees and they'd be, I don't know. I, I really don't know.
Well, I think those trees on your side, the south side, I think he wants to.
They're not on my, they're not, they're on his law.
That chain link fence that's on your side or?
Correct.
Then you've got your trees.
No, no, the trees are on his.
Right, his trees.
Correct.
Then he wants to put the fence. He don't want to.
Yeah, that's all I want to know is information, but I don't want to hear a bunch of, I just want to know what's happening. I, I really, if, if, if we're going to go into it with, with not factual data, then I guess I would be against it because nothing I'm hearing is true except the fence is on my own. Huh?
Alright, we're not going to get into this right now or we're done, okay? You're, my understanding is you're, you're not for or against this application. You wanted to understand.
That I am against.
Could I finish speaking?
Pardon?
Could I finish speaking?
Sure.
You wanted just to understand what the project was, whether or not that chain link fence was going to remain and exactly what was going to happen to the neighboring property.
Correct.
What's going to happen is if a variance is granted, they're going to remove the existing chain link fence because we're going to require that as a condition of this, of any approval. And they're going to construct inside of his property line, so it's no longer on yours. They are requesting two foot inside of his property line to construct the six foot high rise.
When the town's requiring ten foot.
When their town requires ten foot. Obviously, on the south side, he wouldn't be able to meet that because it would be pretty close to his pool, right? If he were to come in, they'd pull ten foot. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Agreed.
Okay. On the north property line, he's proposing the same.
I heard everything about the north. The north, I, I don't even, I'm not, I'm not a south. The north, he can do whatever he wants. It doesn't affect me, you know?
Alright, anything else you'd like to?
Do you know anything about the trees? So, so, so the two foot then seems to be right where the trees are. I, I don't know. I didn't hear it. I don't know, but I mean, what's going to happen with the tree? They're, they're.
My, my, my assumption is the trees will probably come down because they're in the middle of the two foot.
Okay.
That would be my assumption, but I don't know.
I don't think he wants to take those trees down. I think he wants to go on the other side of the tree.
Well, that, he shouldn't try for the two foot. He should go for three and a half or four so that they could stay. So, yeah, I just want, I just want, I'm not trying to.
We didn't know what we're going for.
I understand. I realized that after I heard it. But anyways, yeah, I'm not trying to, you know, I would love it farther away, the better. So, yeah.
I guarantee you, whatever he wants, Amos will do.
Well, Amos isn't here and I, I talked to him before he bought the place and I didn't have any problem with him. I was here when he looked at the place. I've been here the whole time, so I, I.
I think you're going to.
Go back out and identify the gap of the patient.
Yeah, that's great.
Nothing to be tabled.
So, I don't know, if I, if I, if I don't agree, that's what happens.
That's just your opinion.
Right.
That we take into consideration. Anything else, the tip or tat, if either of you have miscommunicated in any way, that is not our concern. So what our concern is now, since I'm hearing personally, that they might want to move the fence to protect the trees, I think we would need to table this and have it be.
I think they're going to have to cut down all the trees.
Well, we want to understand that, so we're, we're going to get to the bottom of that. We're going to hold on this application this evening and we're going to go back and get to the bottom of it, okay?
That's why I asked where the line was about the fence because I know the trees are like something, I mean, I.
Alright, we'll, we'll get to the bottom of it. So, any, anything else, once again, for or against? We understand your position. I think we've heard what you have to say. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against this application? Okay. Seeing no one, we're going to return the discussion back to the board. Pursuant to NYCR, section six seventeen of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for type two secret. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so there seems to be some uncertainty around the fence on the south side. I understand that they're requesting two foot side setback, but I know that there's several, they're giant overgrown arborvitae, I think is what they are, right? That if, if, that, that would have to commit at least four or five feet in order to avoid those. So a two foot setback, we'd much prefer having that inside of those arborvitae's at more like a five or a six foot setback, okay? So we're going to table this until the next meeting, which is February, January twenty-fifth. I don't know if it might be helpful if Mr. Tomasi was at least here with you, if you elect to come back with him or he has somebody else represent him, just so that we can kind of get to the bottom. But in the meantime, we will go back up to the site, Mr. R two, so if we could maybe get, I don't know how we want to get actual dimension inside that. Yep, and, and it would be helpful if, I'm assuming you plan to come to the next meeting? We're going to table this. We're not making, we're not.
I understand. I heard it. Absolutely. When's the next meeting?
It's going to be, we're going to table this until January twenty-fifth. And it'd be very helpful if you do have an instrument survey so we can compare the two.
I thought the town would have something we would look at here and have an answer about the chain link. I'm sorry, I love to prepare.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. So what we'll do is we'll go back out, revisit that south side. I, I think at a minimum that we can communicate back to, to Mr. Sorry, Tomasi, is that we would like to see the fence connected in on, as you agree, on this, on the north side, on the east corner of the house, the northeast corner of the house, as opposed to the northwest corner of the house, as it's got stated on the instrument survey.
I'd also like to have the length of fence being installed on the north and south sides.
So total length of fence, north and south side. And with, with regard to the shed, I mean, yeah, it implies, we, we want to address the shed at all. I, I know he stated it in his project description, but that's, that's irrelevant to this application, okay? It's being compliant.
It's ten foot from the line?
It's, it's thirty and forty and a hundred and ten.
Okay.
Close.
Launches out of foot, then we're good.
Okay, so what we're requesting is that we table this application on January twenty-fifth. We get additional information on the length of the fence on the north and the south side. We're requesting that he move the tie-in point to the house on the, I feel like I'm young, but I guess I have to just. We're requesting that the tie-in move back to the, to the back corner of the house, for lack of a better word, or the northeast corner of the house. And we just want to get a dimension on that south side because we all believe that it's greater than two feet, which lessens the impact of the variance request, okay? Alright, so all in favor of tabling this application on January twenty-fifth?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, alright. Thank you, Barry. We are good. Thank you.
Alright, ready for the next one, sir?
Ah, yes.
Three seventy-five Webster Road accessory structure located at three seventy-five Webster Road. Applicant Roger Ah is requesting area variances to allow a second accessory structure where only one is permitted and also to allow its placement to be forward of the rear line of the principal structure, which is not permitted. Associated with the construction of a twenty foot by thirty foot pole barn with an attached eight foot by thirty foot side shed on a three point eight five acre parcel having SPL number zero five zero point zero three dash one dash thirty-four point two located in an R one single family residential district under section two two five dash thirty six of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening. Tyler Room, McManus Room, substance. Roger Ah, the.
-endear's possession of that property. So, we run into it all the time, and they usually have affidavits that say the property won't change if it's, if it's over a foot is what the, what the limit is. I think John knows what that is, he's seen that before in share, on residential conveyances, instrument survey maps and that sort of thing. My partner, Greg McMahon, just ran into it. So, it's a, just, just for information. Uh, back to what we're here for tonight. Roger owns, and his wife owns, a three-point-seven-eight acre parcel at three seventy-five Webster Road. Uh, it has the original barn that he's utilizing now. They, they, uh, erased the old farmhouse and constructed the new home in his location, as shown on our survey. Uh, he would like to, uh, add the six-hundred square foot pole barn, uh, just to contain some of the, uh, this is a two-story, uh, barn that's there now, that I believe, and I forgot to ask Roger about this, but that the bottom floor is where the cattle work.
Yes.
And so it's-
It's a bank barn, so the downside is where it's all dirt, it's all dirt down the mat, so you can't use it for anything.
So the upper side was where the hay was stored and that sort of thing, and that's where he's storing his equipment and everything else at this point. Uh, they have a business that they're, uh, that they're, and he can talk more about that, but he'd like to move some of the equipment, the lawn equipment, that sort of thing, into the pole barn. And I may not have shown that correctly, east, west, uh, I think it's going to be placed further west than, than I've indicated it. Um, I don't think this is going to change, it's not going to make an undesirable change to the neighborhood. Uh, the pole barn really is to the north of the existing home, and the cemetery is there on the north side. Uh, being that this is a, used to be a farm, that whole, that, that homestead owned all that land that is back there, and, uh, so, you know, a farm is, we're used to having more than one or two buildings on it, so it wouldn't be very unusual for it to contain more than one, one parcel. Uh, we don't see any other remedy, uh, at this point. And, is it self-created? Hmm. It is, but it's needed for the upkeep of the property, and I think they do a very nice job with that. Um-
Are, are you the original owner?
Uh, no.
Yeah, I thought, we, we granted variance, a variance on this property, right? Previous?
If I, if I may make a comment, are you able to hear me?
Yeah.
Um, my wife and I moved from New Jersey about, just about eleven years ago, it was a farmhouse about sixteen feet from the road, but we eventually decided we want to, um, come to Rochester to be close to our grandson, uh, which we're very happy that we have done that. Um, we're very concerned about how the property looks, I don't know, a, a number of the board members have been on the property. My wife and I have spent a, a lot of time and care and money trying to make it look as beautiful as it presently is, so we were very concerned that the pole barn would stick out like a sore thumb. Uh, so if you look on the survey map, the barn is actually set back from the road at the back of that, at the back of our house, which would be alongside the northern part, actually, right where the cemetery is. So virtually from two fifty, if you blink, you won't see that there even is a barn, um, actually a pole barn back there. Uh, we could have moved it to the front, but the aesthetics of the house, it would not have looked the same, and so we decided that it would be best if we just moved it back, and it wouldn't disturb the neighbors next door because it's a cemetery, and the neighbors behind us is quite far back, like I said, it's three acres, and it would be quite far from Route, Route two five oh, Route, Route two fifty. If you have any questions, oh, regarding the equipment in the barn, I'm sure that's a question. Um, I have, I have restored a chuck wagon from eighteen sixty-five, which we're storing, which I do have in the parade, Webster has a parade. I do have a curry wagon that I also put in the parade, which we keep on the property, and we have two tractors. One is a Ford eight N from nineteen fifty, which is in workable condition. It's a, it's an unbelievable piece of machinery, and we just purchased a new tractor, um, with a used plow on it, so we can actually plow the property with forklifts, so we can move whatever trees that we need to be moved and trimmed. And, basically, we just, we just really just want to make it look as beautiful as it is now, and just take the stuff that's extra, instead of putting it in back of the house, putting it, put it in the, the pole barn to make it safe. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer, ladies and gentlemen.
I think we granted a variance on the square footage of this house.
Was it this one I thought it was?
Yeah.
Further from the road.
When was this house built?
The, the house itself?
Yeah.
Uh, it was built eleven years ago.
Yeah, well, I'm pretty sure-
Eleven years ago.
We granted a variance to the, to the square footage of that house.
Thank you.
There was, the original house that we had purchased, uh, the property, it had a, a beautiful farm, a very quaint farmhouse, but it was sixteen feet from, you know, the road, and we were going to have renovations done on that, but it would have cost us more to renovate that house than it was to build a house that we actually wound up doing. So, but, um, I do want to take the opportunity to thank the variance board on a side note, because I, as I mentioned to Corinne, I said, if this was New Jersey, we could never have lived in the house in front and had a house built behind us, they would never have allowed that. So my wife and I are extremely grateful, uh, that the town allowed us actually to build a house while we were still living in, in a, in a house in front. Thank you very, very much for that.
Now, my only question is, when I visited the property over the weekend, um, your survey map shows the pole barn being right next to the house, right in line with it, and it sounded like when we talked that you wanted to push it further back so it would be, it sounded like maybe in line with the, the back corner-
The end of the house, yes, yes.
Maybe not the, the push out to the back, but at least the back corner.
It's in back, you wouldn't believe, you won't, well, you are, you, you know, I knew you had this at the property, you actually originally thought it was in front, we would never have done that. I would never put the barn in, I'd rather, I would rather the equipment rot in the, in the, in the rain than, than have that, have that happen. That's why we, we have to have a setback all the way in the back of the house.
Okay.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, another, another question, but I think what we could do is push that pole barn back so that the west line of the pole barn matches up with the west line of the house.
Thank you.
And giving that a little bit of an offset, which it kind of makes it less visible from the road at the same time. So we will, we will push that back, and it's going to go back about, oh, about five or six feet to the back line of the house, and just create more distance between the, the east line of the, of the pole barn and the east line of the house. Any other comments or questions?
You're going to push that back to the west, so it's going to line up with the major part of the facade, not with that little appendage going to the west?
That's correct.
So, so we'll at least line up with that, not, because you confused me when you said five or six feet.
Yeah, I'm just guessing it, but it does, it'll line up with the back, that major west line of the house-
Okay.
-will be the west line of the pole barn.
Could you just come over and take a look at what I've sketched to see if that's exactly what you're-
No, it's just the, the main run of the house.
So, back in here, so it's going to move to the-
Exactly. That's about five, seven feet.
Okay, you got it. I think this is what our house was talking about.
Yeah, that part will go back further.
So the front, the-
The front of the barn will be-
The east face of the barn will be in line with the west face of the house.
Yeah, that's, yeah, oh, the front of the barn is-
Yeah, the front of the barn is going to the back, yeah, I would never have it there.
Oh, okay, so I'm, I'm really-
Yeah, so the, so the east face of the barn is in line with the west face of the barn.
Yes, remember when you were there, Corinne, and I said, I walked you back there, and yeah, I don't know how that got where it is, I don't want it there, I do not want it there.
What do you want to do?
Exactly.
So that line is in line with the rear-
Yeah, that's where the-
That's a lock, though.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I didn't realize that, I didn't know it was like that.
That's what we're discussing, well, if you want to bring the east face of the park.
Yeah, but when, when both of you were there, when I had the chance to speak to you, I brought you back and said, this is where it's coming, I didn't realize it was a, a sketch.
And that's why I asked, is because the map, it didn't-
I apologize.
-right next to us.
It's, it's engineering error is what it is.
No. All right, well, that, that proposed location is much better, it's much nearer to the rear point of the, the main structure than we had thought.
Yeah, so the, so the easterly face will be following in line with the westerly face of the main house.
We're not backing the most perfectly, we're not.
All right, good. This meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application?
So what, what, why don't you summarize?
We, we-
For the public, if they're pleased, although I'm expecting it's what the, the record clears it was, is that tabled.
Sure. The survey map that was provided, uh, for this evening's meeting indicated that the proposed pole barn would be in approximate alignment with both the east and west facade, so it would be kind of contained within the, uh, front facade and the rear facade of the house, pushed off to the north. The applicant is now proposing that that pole barn structure, the front facade of the pole barn structure will now be in alignment with the northwest corner-
Yes.
-of the house. It will not meet the requirements of the town code, because the town code indicates that it would be no further than the furthest point of the house, and you have a bump out in the back of the house, so it will not be, it will not meet code, but it's much closer to compliance than we were seeing on the original drawing. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Everybody in line?
That's correct. And because of the terrain, and that portion, if you can't, can't push it farther to the west because the terrain's not conducive to that, there's steam travel.
Is the applicant in agreement with that narrative?
I'm sorry, I couldn't figure it. Yes.
Okay. But that doesn't change the application at all?
No, it, it makes it, it makes it less significant.
Less significant than a block.
And we're good, for public discussions. Okay. This meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application. Seeing nobody, we will return the discussion back to the board. Pursuant to NYCR, section six seventeen in the environmental code, I'll make a motion for type two seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. I think we've beat this one up, uh, quite a bit. The applicant is looking for additional storage, uh, as was noted. He's got an existing, or a pre-existing barn on the property, uh, but is requesting storage above and beyond, uh, that historic barn outside, correct?
It is. Yes, it is, it's, uh, we just got a, a plant from the, from the Webster Museum that I proudly display on the barn.
Very nice. Um, as Mr. Howson pointed out, uh, the further you go to the west, the, I guess, steeper the incline is, uh, for lack of better words, uh, and the applicant has amended what we believed was the proposed location this evening, uh, to push that structure more into compliance with town code by moving the structure to the west, so that now the front facade of the proposed pole barn is in alignment with the furthest northwest corner of the house structure, okay? We recognize that it doesn't meet code because there is, uh, I guess Mr. Howson stated, an appendage on the, uh, the house structure, uh, that, uh, is that a sunroom or something off the back side that?
What's that, bump out in the house?
The bump out.
The bump out of the backyard, what is it? I'm sorry, where is that bump out of the backyard of the house?
It's a lot.
Oh, that's, that's the, uh, library.
Okay.
That's the library.
In order to fully meet code, it would have, the front facade of the barn would have to be in alignment with the westmost point of that library, which it isn't, which is fine, we understand where you hold it to, okay?
That's your library.
Yeah, that's the library.
Uh, there are no adverse physical or environmental impacts, uh, associated with the construction of this barn. On the north side of this property is the cemetery. Uh- Any other comments?
Other than this accessory building that may be used for commercial purposes or other purposes, what should be your standard for test reports?
This is for your use only, not for any commercial operations, and it's storage of, of your equipment, correct?
Yes.
Anybody have anything else that you'd like to add?
I mean, it's almost a four acre parcel, it's, it'll be square foot wise, it's-
I thought both of them-
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Scott.
That's a two, two-pointing parcel, so the second accessory building, not too much to the, to a side of the property, and we, you know, just without a small lot, we could issue, but it's quite a large lot.
All right, thank you very much. Barry, we're laughing because every time you go off a mute, it sounds like crickets or birds or chirping or something, so-
Angry birds.
All right, I think we've covered each of the standards, and we can move forward to, and I would also adopt the, um, the language that was provided in the application around, uh, the standards in your meeting as well.
I will make a motion to grant an area variance at three seventy-five Webster Road for the applicant Roger Ah to allow for a second accessory structure where only one is permitted, and to allow the placement to be forward of the rear line of the principal structure, which is not permitted, associated with the construction of a twenty-by-thirty foot pole barn with a attached eight-by-thirty foot side shed on a three-point-eight-by-acre parcel with SBL number zero-five-zero point zero-three dash one dash thirty-four dash two. I would further define the location of the accessory structure, that the east face of the accessory structure will be in line with the northwest corner, the main corner line of the house. Um, how else would I further, better define it, rather than how it's shown on the survey yet? Um, so it's-
It's just the most northwest, the most northwest point of the house. There's no other, that's the most northwest point of the house.
Okay. I don't want it to be confused that it's the bump out, so-
Right, okay. So that would be the most north one.
So roughly in line or behind the northwest corner of the house. So roughly in line, or behind the northwest corner of the house? Okay.
Second.
Mrs. Bola? Aye. Mr. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Mr. Housen?
Aye.
Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, we're, uh, almost done. Uh, so, uh, couple conditions are applied. Must obtain unnecessary governmental permits, including a town building permit. One-year meaningful construction is set to expire one year from this evening, and the, uh, pole barn is for your personal use, uh, not for any commercial operation or living space. Okay?
Appreciate you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Ladies and gentlemen, um, my, uh, wife and I thank you very, very much, and we love Webster. We're so happy we moved from New Jersey. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
That concludes this evening's meeting. Thank you for watching.
So because of the size of the structure, the south side is to the left of the middle, so when you, when you submit that application, you'll just revise the map to show. Because it's over five hundred square feet. It's just a preliminary final and one.
Thank you, Chris.
Alright, yeah.
Okay, no problem. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All set. Good night, Barry.
See you, Barry.